Ten minutes for the regular council meeting on September the tenth and special meeting until October the first. After you've had a chance to review them, go under motion to have those minutes approved. If there are any additions, corrections, or alterations.
Do you have a copy?
Minutes?
Yes.
We have a motion or are we still sitting? I guess we're still sitting. Tiff, minutes do not need to be approved, just the city council minutes.
I make a motion for a regular council meeting.
I say, call it off.
Yes.
Aye.
Abstain.
Minutes are approved. Okay. Minutes of the special council meeting until the first. Was that to approve both mystery or just?
What?
Did you want to approve both, since it's special and regular?
I have me with the special ones. I just did for the city council.
Can I make a motion to approve this special meeting?
You have a motion for a special meeting? Approved, second, uh, table, call it off.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. City clerk's cash receipt report.
Okay, total cash receipts for the month of September, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion to approve. I make a motion to be approved. Mr. Callow.
Aye.
Aye. We also have a, uh, statement of cash and investments, which is a treasures report. I put one here. I can pass this around.
The cash and investments?
Yes. Statement of cash and investments. Teresa's not here this evening. Uh, we should be here for government room before next week. Hopefully this information only caught up then. All right, uh, let's see what we have here. Reports from committees, uh, city employee change, you have any kind of report for this evening?
No, I do not, ma'am.
Uh, I don't see Mike here, Barb isn't here. Uh, anything from the police committee? I see you have a meeting, but are you ready to make the report?
Yes. Um, basically, we would like to put on the agenda for next month. We have some equipment and maintenance, uh, equipment needs and maintenance and equipment issues that we'd like to see taken care of. Um, Terrence is here and he's going to look up some numbers per month that would be needed to take care of some of these issues so that we'll have somebody here over talking about.
And as soon as we get those, we'll make sure that Rob gets them and we'll put them in everybody's mailbox. We have a mailbox now at city hall. So when that kind of information comes in and copied, put it in everybody's mailbox. So if we get a report for an employee that everyone needs to be aware of, you'll have it copied as soon as it's available. I'll have, uh, Barb call you as committee chairman and let you know what that information is in. So if it has, if any information comes to the attention of city hall, it's pertinent to any chairman, we'll be sure and notify that committee chairman immediately. All right, uh, cemetery committee. And then Parks.
Not fully established, probably not.
Barbara?
Yes, uh, we have all the water and sewer, we have a meeting on October third at city hall and we were all present. Shane Norrie was also there. Uh, we had a discussion about on the proposed ordinance, which is on the unfinished business part of our agenda and we'll be done during that.
Okay, did you all receive a copy of the ordinance? That was fair enough, good. All right, anything from, uh, task committee, Rob?
Yeah, I don't have any.
I hope we have a product for you by next motion. Like the guy in the Delta iceberg, you know, he might have a lot to say. All right, the plans from the city. Rob, did you get those out? Are they approved?
We did, they are approved.
A motion to pay them.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
All second.
All of them?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye.
The bills are paid. Each check is available. Liquid water bills, uh, now this is back on the agenda. Uh, I'm not sure why Barb put it there, so they have a motion to shut off.
And that may be what she's doing. Yeah, I guess this, right.
Or shut off, and the liquid bills at ninety days.
Um, and we had, well, I don't want to speak, although I don't, do you want me to? Okay. Um, they weren't flagged this Thursday. We have, we have learned, now, we can still flag a month behind. They were not flagged Thursday because technically the bills are due to, the last day is today or tomorrow, because I believe that the tenth of the month, depending on the meeting falls. So it's, it's a little tough, although we do need, we will starting to future take better attention and those that are ninety days from the month, you know, before will be flagged and we need to do that. But we did not flag any, to the best of my knowledge this time, did we?
No, but it would be, it would be my suggestion, and I think we're going to probably, maybe, we tag anything after thirty, we shut off everything after nine. So they should have been tagged.
Okay. Did I miss one of the tags, one of the, one of the meters will be tagged? Is that going to be Thursday?
They, they should have been tagged last Thursday, but...
But because the bills are not due until tomorrow.
But that's irrelevant because we tag everything past thirty, we shut off everything past nine.
Okay.
So, I mean, so from now this time forward, we will, we will do that, although if we have to have a meeting and, and change the way we do, we can, we can do that.
I have a question.
Yes.
What exactly do we tag the meeting or four?
Shane, pardon? Uh, Mayor Luthler asked what do you tag?
It's my understanding if you're thirty days, thirty days in the rear, even though this bill puts you ninety, definitely go out and tag it, we're going to shut you off. And approval is sort of a scare tactic and approval will come tonight on nine. So you're going to be tagged at thirty, but you're actually ninety, which you would need today.
I guess the question is where do you put the tag?
We put it on the, on the door.
So we don't formally notify them? You just put a note on the door or a meter?
Yeah, it's a bright red tag and it sticks right in the door.
Okay. And what exactly does the tag say?
That you have an opportunity to attend the meeting tonight.
Okay.
And discuss your bill. And if we, if you not come to an agreement, you will be shut off Tuesday by noon.
But does that happen?
Yeah, it has, except for this month.
We did a lot of, a lot more people show up and pay the bills than we did, that's...
I, I think we, you know, I, we talked about that. I think we can talk about it again, but yes, they do get shut off.
There may be a better way to handle it.
So all these people on this list do not have any water?
No.
This just shows that there's thirty days in the rear, it's six days in the rear, it's a ninety days, they usually, they're going to shut off. They want twenty days, interesting. But I thought he said that they want thirty days only and as you said in the meeting, that then the next Thursday, they would be shut off. We only tag them.
Did you mean thirty days arrears?
Yes, if they're thirty days in the rear, we should show up for a tag, but I, I think we're going to tweak this from what I understood the other night. But it's my understanding that if they're thirty days in the rear, you'll be tagged. Tonight, you would be ninety days because the due date was today. So the actual group that you're going to tell us to shut off will come out of that group from the red tags from thirty days on. Not everybody will get shut off, but everybody will have been tagged and a lot of them will have paid. I, I'm sure there's a little better than that.
I think, I think the question, and it is confusing, after thirty days, somebody's given a notice, but they're not shut off if they're just thirty days in the winter, right?
No, it, it'll be approved right, right now.
Well, somebody's thirty days off, you know, arrears, could they be shut off tonight?
No, I'm sure that the council would only approve the ninety days.
Would only approve ninety days arrears?
We would tag everybody at past thirty, just to, it's sort of a second notice, but tonight, the council would probably instruct me to do only ninety days.
So, but the notice that you put on there tells them after thirty days that they will, that they will...
The city ordinance says after thirty days, they can't be shut off.
Okay, okay. But we haven't shut anyone off in less than ninety, is what I'm trying to say here.
Okay. What do you do with sixty days?
They would just be tagged, uh, and we, you know, I think committee probably needs to address that and maybe come up with a better wording on the actual tag.
It's not been, I guess, something that is precise. Almost everyone has always at some point come in, linked up to one, but we've always got one or two a year that we end up losing. People who move out of town or whatever reason, we've had some people who left us with two, three hundred dollar water bills. And that's usually a ninety day water bill and if they're gone, we get stuck with it. Bill, I can put that one, we lean on property that we have got.
I thought for a while we were doing the sixty days of order.
Yes.
Oh, didn't they change?
That was, it gets one, the bill was due on the meeting itself, and that's kind of where it depends, sixty, ninety days.
Which is the problem that we have today. We would shut off somebody's, that you didn't take them because they're technically not, they still have to, two days to make their bill.
Because the nineties are, and I think we've had the mentality that, you know, it's a small town and we don't want to, but it, it's gotten to the point where you can look at the money on there and, and we just, you have to, you know.
You're doing over ninety-eight.
I think we've been probably too nice about it on it.
And there are one, two, three people on here that have been shut off. That says, it says comments, shut off.
Yes, yes.
So those three, if I'm not right, I wonder, meter number twelve, two eighty-one, and three fifteen. Those have been shut off.
That's correct, yes. Then, you know, you see like one ninety-six there, and he's been gone for a year. The property's in Limbo, it's one of those bank repossession, the bank doesn't even own the property.
Okay.
So we put a lien on the property, but no one really wants the property either. So there's nothing we can do at this point. It, it was shut off and then the party left town.
Okay, so who wants that say, okay, put a lien on it? You've actually done it or just in the process of?
In the process.
Because those obviously have been on the, before, right?
Yep. I'm going to go right there. Those are prepared, I boost. I would say that half of this list, half of the names you see here and the numbers are routinely on the list in the thirty day column.
They're terrible.
Well, they pay the late fees. They come in, they pay their bills, but they're the same people, they end up paying the bill every time. So they end up paying their bills, they always pay the late. We haven't shut any of these people off that I mentioned, who are commonly on this list. They're commonly on the list, they commonly come in, they routinely pay their bills late, with late charges. It's when they get into the ninety day column that we start to really get concerned.
Do you think the majority of these will come in in the next two days and pay?
Majority of them will, yes. Right, Barb? Sorry, pardon?
Yeah, some of them will want to make a deal.
And the mayor's kind of a softie. They will pay their bill what they owe us and they promise to pass fifty dollars on Tuesday and a hundred and ten on next Monday and they stick to their deal that we are pretty nice to.
Some of these, why are they not?
Usually these, a lot of these people don't, a lot of these people aren't driving a very nice car.
No.
You know, they're not dressed up, they're, they're just struggling to get by on that. And if they do pay their bills, we let them pay late occasionally. It's kind of like giving them a little bit of loan in a way, a zero interest loan. We don't really have a work policy, but maybe that's the best. Many times extenuating circumstances, a lot of people, a lot of people are struggling. But that's why we ask for the council to give us the authorization to, Shane, shut these bills off when they fall into that ninety day column. They just don't come in, don't come in, make no attempt to pay, we got you tomorrow.
I don't believe the ones that try to pay, but get their own here all the time, the same ones who are not, you know.
Well, they're off and then they're back on again. They're off and back on.
Okay, question number fifty, the meter number fifty-nine says, "Suns are waiting for insurance dollars." Is that a deal that's already been done?
Barb? Waiting for insurance money.
They, um, had a really bad leak. Yeah. They had a really bad leak and, um, there was nobody that lived in the house, they lived in Purion or whatever, and, and I guess the guys found it and so it did a lot of damage in the house and they turned it into insurance. So we're waiting for insurance.
Now, we could lean, put a lien on the property if we wanted to, but it would be a little expensive in part of the city.
To me, that's kind of like Peterson, where we know that they're waiting for it from the third party. So you just go to the healthcare center and tell them, "We need that," check from the state, it's a purely valid one. Okay, is this the same way where it says Pearson is to pay, number forty-two, forty-two?
Tom Pearson owns the property.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's going to pay.
Which one is that? No.
Yeah, was that? So was this one or that one?
By chance?
Um, it's on Miller Street.
Okay.
I think as regards billing procedures for the water and sewer department, uh, I could probably say that not a lot has changed since I was mayor in nineteen eighty-five. And probably not a lot have changed since nineteen fifty-five. So we have never had a policy handle on the shut offs and that sort of thing, never really codified always things. We have a few things on the books, like service, uh, you know, a reconnection fee, shut off fee, this sort of thing. We started with the, uh, vacation policy, I think that's the first thing that actually addressed that issue.
Ken, any of these or all of these or some of these actually be shut off?
We go out and if we cannot shut them off, we call for the OJ and we pick the shut. So once they're on there, they will be, uh, taken to be shut off then.
Well, then, I moved to, I moved to the award.
That's a lot.
I moved to shut off meter number thirty-five, ninety-seven, one thirty-six, one forty-one, one seventy-one, one seventy-seven, two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-four, two thirty-nine, two sixty, two seventy-one, two eighty-four, three oh five, three ten, four thirty-nine, four seventy-four, four eighty-two, four ninety-two, four ninety-three, five eighty-eight, seven oh seven. Seven oh seven. So it's there being ninety days that doesn't already shut off? For a little?
I'm sorry?
Something. Basically, I think ninety days that isn't already shut off or how long they'll be attached on.
Well, you cropped that question a lot.
I'm going to say you can't.
Cardi, these are counts that are ninety days, which have not been shut off, which do not have liens.
Or liens or some explanation.
These are questions.
I wondered like one of the suns are waiting for, is that? She skipped back, I skipped back. I know, but this is...
Happened last year, yes.
I know, but do they still get a bill or we just wait? Or could he have gotten the money and then just like, oh, well, they don't say anything?
We've sent another statement to them.
Oh. Have you heard back from them?
Shut off.
Yeah.
I think we should send them a letter and let them know we're going to put a lien on it if we don't proceed with it.
Does anyone understand?
Yeah, I mean, of course, they were looking at, do we need that when you start noticing that one in the letter?
So maybe we could amend that to include, and so that a lot of too many others that were waiting for it, we would send them not paid the water to them. I think that would be a different motion. I think we're going with this motion, are we going to shut, technically shut off those people who are...
A shut off is an action that, you know, that we take and I think that requires a motion. I think if you want to make the suggestion, I'm sure Shane and Barb would probably disagree. Send a letter to someone like the pile house where we want to know is that, maybe I'll put a lien on it or, I have a question. Have a motion or a second?
Yes.
Mr. Second.
Oh, Mr. Second, I'm sorry. Uh, let's call it off.
Yes, four.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, unfinished business. This, um, maybe with Rod, towards the end of the month, we're going to go through some of the numbers to just go over, uh, what the lobby should do this year, it was on the vice council. And as far as this water and sewer ordinance, uh, I actually didn't prepare this. Uh, I did set over a previous ordinance, uh, in a business use, because I was unsure what the others were on this, uh, in any case. Uh, it was somewhat similar, we had similar ordinance, but any user's desire with convenience, that service temporarily discontinued, make a written application to the city clerk. Application states debates for temporary discontinuance and it shall be for a period of not less than ninety days or more than a hundred and eighty days. The, uh, processing fee for disconnection of services, ten dollars, do apply in the application's file. Each user will continue to still pay ten dollars per month. Uh, meters will continue to be read on a monthly basis. If users need unusual, observe, the city will kind of, user contact number and write an application. City is not responsible.
Half of the names you see here and the numbers are routinely on the list in the 30 day column.
They're terrible.
They pay the late fees. They come in, they pay their bills. But they're the same people, they end up paying the bill every time. So, they end up paying their bills, they always pay the late. We haven't shut any of these people off that I mentioned who are commonly on this list. They're commonly on the list, they commonly come in and routinely pay their bills late with late charges. It's when they get into the 90 day column that we start to really get concerned.
Do you think the majority of these will come in in the next two days and pay?
Majority of them will, yes. Right, Barb? Marry your pardon?
Yeah, some of them will want to make a deal.
And the mayor's kind of a softie. If they will pay their bill what they owe us, and they promise to pass $50 on Tuesday and $110 on next Monday, and they stick to their deal, then we are pretty nice to them.
Some of these.
Usually these people don't... A lot of these people aren't driving a very nice car.
No.
You know, they're not dressed up, they're just struggling to get by. And if they do pay their bills, we let them pay late occasionally. It's kind of like giving them a little bit of loan in a way, a zero interest loan. We don't really have a work policy, but maybe that's best sometimes. There are many times extenuating circumstances for a lot of people. A lot of people are struggling. But that's why we asked for the council to give us the authorization to have Shane shut these bills off when they fall under that 90 day column. They just don't come in, don't come in and make no attempt to pay. We got you tomorrow.
I don't believe the ones that try to pay, but get their own here all the time, the same ones who are not, you know...
Well, they're off and then they're back on again. They're off and back on.
Okay, question number 50, the meter number 59 says, "Suns are waiting for insurance dollars." Is that a deal that's already been done?
Barb? Waiting for insurance money.
They had a really bad leak.
Yeah?
They had a really bad leak and there was nobody that lived in the house. They lived in Purion or whatever. And I guess the guys found it, and so it did a lot of damage in the house, and they turned it into insurance. So, we're waiting for insurance.
Now, we could lean, put a lien on the property if we wanted to, but it would be a little expensive in part of the city.
To me, that's kind of like Pearson, where we know that they're waiting for it from a third party. So, you just go to the healthcare center and tell them.
They will read that as not checked from the state, it's a purely valid one.
Okay, is this the same way where it says Pearson is to pay, not number 42, number 42?
Tom Pearson owns the property.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's gonna pay.
Which one is that?
So, is this one or how's it?
Um, it's on Miller Street.
I think as regards billing procedures for the water and sewer department, I think probably say that not a lot has changed since I was mayor in 1985. And probably not a lot have changed since 1955. So, we have never had a policy handle on the shut offs and that sort of thing. Never really codified all these things. We have a few things on the books, service, you know, a reconnection fee, shut off fee, this sort of thing. We started with the vacation office, I think that's the first man to actually address that issue.
Ken, any of these or all of these or some of these actually be shut off?
We go out and if we cannot shut them off, we call for the OJ and we pick the shut. So, once they're on already, we'll be able to take the be shut off then.
I move to, I'm gonna be a long... I move to shut off meter number 35, 97, 136, 141, 171, 177, 220, 221, 224, 239, 260, 271, 284, 305, 310, 439, 474, 482, 492, 493, 588, 707. 707.
So, is there any 90 days that doesn't already show shut off?
I'm sorry?
Something.
What was coming?
Something.
Basically, everything 90 days that isn't already shut off or haven't been being taken off.
Well, you caught that touch real quick. Cardi, these are councils of 90 days which have not been shut off, which do not have liens.
Or liens or some explanation.
I wondered like one that the suns are waiting for, is that...
She skipped back. I skipped back.
I know, but this is...
Happened last year, yes.
I know, but do they still get a bill? Or we just wait? Or could he have gotten the money and then just like, oh, well, they don't say anything?
We've sent another statement to him.
Oh.
Have you heard back from him?
The shut off.
I think we should send him a letter and let them know we're going to put a lien on it if we don't proceed with it.
Does anyone understand? Well, it's happening.
Yeah, I mean, of course, they were looking at doing liens, that would certainly notice that we're letting them live.
So, maybe we could amend that to include, and so then a lot of too many others else that we're waiting for, that we've sent a note, a letter to them.
I think that would be a different motion.
Yeah, that will be...
I think we're going with this motion, are we going to shut, technically shut off those people who are...
A shut off is an action that, you know, that we take, and I think that requires a motion. I think if you want to make the suggestion, I'm sure Shane and Barb would probably disagree. We'll send a letter to someone like the Pyle House where we want to know is that, maybe I'll put a lien on it or... Have a motion or a second? Oh, misty second, I'm sorry. Let's call it.
Aye.
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 All right, unfinished business. Bruce?
And as far as this water and sewer ordinance, I actually didn't prepare this. I did set over a previous ordinance in the business use, because I was unsure what the others were on this. In any case, it was somewhat similar, we had similar ordinance, but any user's desire with convenience to have service temporarily discontinued, make a written application to the city clerk, application states debates for temporary discontinuance, and it shall be for a period of not less than 90 days nor more than 180 days. The processing fee for disconnection of services, $10, do apply in the application's file. Each user will continue to still pay $10 per month. Meters will continue to be read on a monthly basis. If users deemed unusual or observed, the city will kind of, user contact number and written application. City is not responsible for usage, like leaks or otherwise. So, I think that'd mean that the user would still be responsible for any service, any, any water usage. Processing fee for reconnection of services, $10. At the end of 180 days, or at the time of reinstatement, whichever is first to occur, using will be $10 connection or reconnection fee, in addition to actual metering plus applicable monthly surcharges. And then it just repeals any ordinance that might conflict with any of those.
Shane, you just got to tell what you had in mind?
Well, um, wait a minute. Before we discuss this, let's have a motion.
We should.
Okay, yes. Okay, I move that the ordinance to establish charges for city services temporarily disconnected be adopted.
Any discussion on it? We had a committee meeting. I'm sorry, Shane? We had a committee meeting.
And we just, there was an ordinance prepared before, so we just took it from, just...
I don't work that side.
Yeah, I mean, most of it is not the same, you know, but we did change the fact that we thought that people should come into the city hall, make out that application meeting, name, address, your meter number, that type of thing, nothing elaborate. But we do want to know when you're leaving and when you're coming back. Because of that, then we, because of the process of what has to be done with the bills, that's why we thought about the $10 charge, both for starting, stopping and starting, the billing process. That's it. The surcharge is on there, that's why we thought we could continue to make the surcharge. The $10 that they pay that, that that's not going to be, they're not going to be using water and sewer, but the surcharge is there for another matter. So, we still want that on there. We do think it needs to be read still on a monthly basis, only to avoid the fact that if they do have a leak or there is a problem, we can, we'll know it, we should know it by reading the meter. Not we don't read the meter, that's something that shouldn't happen, okay? And that's basically what we come up with. We did not think that it should be less than 90 days if you're only gone for two months or something. Then you're getting, you know, on, off, on, off, so that's why we did the 90 days. No more than 180 days if someone's gone for six months, I guess they're gonna have to make out another application and start all over again.
If I read this correctly, if you're gone for six months, you accrue $60 in surcharge fees, plus $10 to turn it off and $10 to technically turn it on, even though the water is still on. So, your bill at the end of 180 days would be $80, correct?
No, it'd only be $70 because we're gonna give the $10 upfront, the first.
Oh, there was $10 to only pay once?
No.
No.
No, the first processing fee?
I bet the total is $80. $10 upfront and $70 on the...
Because the first $10 is due upon application.
Motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? So, a second? I'm sorry? If that, a vote? Motion's approved. We have a policy. Last month, we had cemetery rules, so if you're given back to the cemetery, we're of consideration. I guess the cemetery has not met, really has not met. So, technically, we'll wait for a report from the cemetery committee on those. Last month, and we'll put them on the agenda for the next month with the report from the cemetery committee. Hopefully, that committee will meet with Rob Hammer and Don Schmidt, cemetery sexman. Any public concerns to see here?
You just mentioned me on cemetery.
I said Rob Hammer. Big Rob. Sam?
I got some on public comment. No one else does here.
Oh, right at Sam.
Okay, about the cemetery rules and regulations, I guess that's the proposed new ones coming out, right?
We have some that were approved in April of this year.
Was that the list?
It's banned on those.
Okay, is that the list that we got from the city?
That's what we were sent by Craig Johnson, yes, Don Schmidt's associate.
It's not what we voted on, no one even...
You didn't vote on it.
But I can say something on it.
You can't, you may.
You know, some of these are great, I think. Some, you're gonna have one half the time, I think, on them. And just to go through a couple of them here, if I may, the flags. I took a cruise through the cemetery. We don't have a problem with our legion, because we get them in and out. There's other groups that put flags out here, the Wyoming Fire Department, you're gonna have to notify them to let them know of it. Also, there's families that put flags out, they buy their own veterans markers, and they put flags on themselves. They're different than our legion flags, and I drove through the cemetery today, and there's about six or seven of them there, and they're all in excellent repair. So, you know, you're, you're three days before and three days after these three holidays, so you're gonna pull them. First of all, you're gonna have a problem with talking to the Cogan family and trying to take his flag off his son's grave that was, he died when he was in the service. You know, who's gonna tell them about it? Who's gonna tell Ted Pyle's family, who Ted got the Silver Starter Third I S award in the military, that he can't have a flag on his grave year round or blistering his son? You know, or Buck Dyson, you know, the sheriff used to be. I mean, you're gonna, I think they're really gonna have a problem with a few of those. And they keep them in good repair, they do. So, you know, I think this deal here with just, you're talking under 10 flags, you know, I don't know, I just, that's my opinion, I just don't agree with it. Also, on the shepherd hooks, y'all got the 75 to 100 shepherd hooks out there. Who's gonna be out there Memorial Day, a week before Memorial Day, telling all these people that are coming in with shepherd hooks, spend $20 for a shepherd hook, $30 for a basket to hang on, that they can't do it? You know? Somebody's gonna get a lot of calls. And they deserve it, I think.
Debbie, myself...
Yeah, Barb's gonna get called.
Debbie, myself, and Don are on that committee, I think we do have an intention to meet, to talk. I think that what we are looking for is a little more of a basic sign that just is basic rules. I don't think we're wanting to take everything out.
Well, see, what we did with our legion, we put all our veterans' markers on the right side of stone to keep it uniform and for mowing and trimming. And also, it's easier for us to find those markers. Maybe something could be done with the shepherd hooks, or maybe be put in back of the stone, out of the way a little bit, you know, if they're all uniform, so they're just, you know, being punched in the ground anywhere, you know, maybe that's something to consider, just put them in back.
Sam, what prompted this is we've had people putting flowers in the mason jars out there, and we've had damage to equipment. Some of the shepherd hooks have, the way they're made, part of the shepherd hook is in the ground. Somebody's took out from, we've damaged equipment, we've had pottery shattered. The problem is maintaining the cemetery, and so we've, we're not really trying to infringe on anybody's policies here. But if it has to do with flags, flags could be placed properly, you know, not out in the middle of the, of the grave, next to the headstone. Like you said, you put all yours on the right side, that's great. If we had a policy for the placement of these things, no one would probably have. But when you have to weed whack, how many stones we got out there, forgot, no indication. It takes a long time.
Oh, I understand.
And we, we're concerned because we all, we've had almost disastrous cleaning glass jobs out there. And sometimes, you know, you get a little mason jar into the weeds and you run over the lawnmower.
That, you know, like with the shepherd hooks, they're, you know, if they're just put right in back of the stone...
That's right. If there's just a place to put the...
All your people know that they'd be there and everything like that, you know?
That's why this was brought up, to try to get a starting point. A starting point whereby we can maintain the cemetery properly and still give people the opportunity to...
These aren't the law.
They should not choose them, that was just something...
I'm just giving you a suggestion.
Well, I think that the suggestion is right. If you'd like to meet with the cemetery committee, that'd be great. We want the cemetery committee to consider this and bring a report in.
I mean, you know, there's a lot of things, metal stands, boxes, easels, benches, pots, shepherd hooks are not permitted. Benches, there's four or five benches out there. They're pretty much mounted in the ground. And, you know, are these gonna be grandfathered in? Are they gonna have to be? Or is this enough to...
I guess the council would know about that.
Because another thing, John Sumey has one for his son, six-year-old son that was killed. I wouldn't want to be the guy go tell him, he's gotta get his bench out there. So, you know, it's just something to consider, so thanks for listening.
So, we should let you know when we have our meeting?
Fine, please do.
Anything else?
Sam?
Yes?
We've had, Rob and I both have had phone calls and a lot of, when this first came out. So, you're not the only one. There's lots of people that was very upset with that. So, Rob had a lot of phone calls.
Yeah, I'd be glad to attend.
Well, these were sent to Don two weeks before the meeting. Had it been sent to me by Craig Johnson from Chicago, and the very respect the gentleman in the, in the favor, just asking for something as a starting point, what do we, what do we do? And that's what he said. So, I gave those to Don a couple of weeks before the meeting last month. And Alderman got them in advance as well. It was a starting point. It wasn't set up as an ordinance that was open to discussion. Problem, as you heard, is the mowing, the maintenance of the cemetery act. If everybody plays by the same set of rules and we all work together, it's not a problem. Sometimes, things get overboard.
Thank you, Rick.
You bet.
Quick question. On the other side of this, then are you gonna take responsibility for stones that have been moved?
Yes, I understand stones that have not been put through and re-erected. Are you talking about stones that might have been shipped or something?
Yes.
I don't know, I've never admitted. No one's asked me that question.
There was anything in the way, they likely knocked the corner of a stone they got.
I've never been asked that question, and I don't have an answer. Sam?
Yeah, years ago, not with this mowing crew, but with a different mowing crew years ago, we had a problem with mowers running over the veterans' markers. Well, these are steel and bronze, I mean, you know, anybody hits one of those, it's gonna do some damage to the mower, I think. What I did was I collected these and brought it to the city council, and they paid the American Legion for it, we bought new markers and put them out there.
Mr. Whittaker has...
We haven't had a...
Been riot act a couple of times.
We haven't had a problem with the mowing crew now.
We've been pleased with what we're saying. I mean, I'm not opposed to any of this, and I'm in favor of doing what we can to have a, a attractive historical cemetery with pride. I thought for a long time we should do some maintenance on the mausoleum. That's like talking to a dead horse. You know, that thing has not had anything done to it since 1954, except we did have a roof sprayed on it about 15 years ago, but it needs a lot of work, and about $11,000 needs to be done to that. Some of the stained glass windows are on it. It, it, it looks bad.
Well, I'm out there...
Anytime it looks bad, the whole place looks bad.
I'm out there around Memorial Day a lot. And you do get a lot of good comments about how that cemetery looks.
We've been...
From people coming from out of town that see it, and you do get a lot of good comments about it, so that's...
Very pleased with what our guys have done this last year or so. Very pleased. And that will cost down too. We're getting, we're getting better, we're getting better. Do a better job than you're doing in less time, and hopefully that'll keep it. Anything else on that? All right, the next thing on the agenda is the Halloween hours. Propose that they be the same as last year, 5 to 7:30 on the 31st Halloween. All right, the last thing on the agenda is the TIF appropriations. We had a TIF committee meeting.
Do you need to accept all of the dollars?
It's just something that the mayor sets. It's not a motion. All right, TIF committee meeting, October 1st. Collins, Eddie Webb, on Winkler, Connie Jig, Mr. Turnbull, Rob Penny, Don Turnbull, and Clerk Sandy Langdon, who are in attendance with Theresa Mason, TIF administrator. Now, currently, we have a TIF dollars of $22,798 and expected income of $57,000.
I'm gonna receive that.
We receive it. I'm sorry. Just reading for a minute, some benefit of those out there, audience. We had some discussion, and was recommended by the TIF committee to delete from further consideration. Was it three or four requests?
Three.
Three.
Three requests. There were Gibbler's Ice, Lasana Lodge, and Main Street Apartments. So, the open requests we still have are the two on the public library for $12,000 on their drainage. And we still have $70,000 appropriated for the city park. The only one who made a recommendation was Rob. Rob proposed that we spend $6,500 to the general fund for half of what is owed, $7,500 toward the water and sewer department, $1,500 to the economic development, which we had promised them, $1,500 to the TIF administrator, and $35,000 initially to the park, $6,000 to the library. And that was a recommendation made by Rob. Rob, do you have your notes for that ended up to?
Just $30,000.
Yeah, because it left, it left 21.
This evening, if we so desire, as a committee, which is now a council, we may go to appropriate funds. Rob suggested, or we may discuss it, or we may not. Do I have any motion on TIF appropriations this evening?
I would make a motion to, um, leave what we had previously committed on the park and to put the remainder towards the library.
Shane, how many square feet are in the city block sidewalk? And what number are you using on your square footage?
1,200 and about 81.
81.
Is he already timed for you?
How much per square foot do you count the way across?
I'm trying to do math here.
While he's figuring out...
14,000, please.
Thank you.
Do you, did I write your motion?
My motion is to keep the 70,000 committed to the park that we previously voted for and for the remaining dollars to go towards the library.
The 70,000 is already in the budget, it's already there. So, we would have to subtract from what we have available, the 70,000, to see what's left. So we would have to subtract from what we have available, the seventy thousand, to see what's left.
And not come where the libraries need, is that correct?
Rob, no, no.
But, okay, I second the motion, so we can discuss it.
I, I am for, mostly going along with Nasty, I would still like to see a little, little chunk, if it comes off of some, go back into the general fund. I would, I would like, I would like to see some of that seventy, if it can chop six or seven off. Um, I'm not leaving the water out. We did get, we did get twenty-two-five back in, in the water already this year. And we still have the fifteen for the administrator, and that's what we left. And actually, the, the economic development had fifteen go out, so.
Correct.
That, that fifteen is, is done. Um, so.
You look at that third quarter on that fifteen, that's a six thousand dollar. What we've been funding then is six thousand dollars. So you've got fifteen in the past, actually three thousand, and you're looking forward to the next quarter, fifteen hundred. So you've got to owe fifteen now going forward, but.
We had a little, we had, we had a little discussion on, because we keep saying we're, we keep, are being told that we owe that, and I don't know that we, that we owe that. Um, but we did pay in July, I believe, or June. And we said address fifteen hundred again in October. Now that has been paid, so we're, so we're three thousand. And it was gonna be every, every quarter. Now, I do realize that, but we could have money left from the park that we can do, because the next quarter would still fall, actually, the next two quarters would still fall within this period, uh, of our, of our TIF fund of, if I'm thinking right, October, November, December, January, February, March, April. Would be, would be, so it would be January, and then February, March, April again. And we would look at that every month and hope to hear from the economic, now, enriches here tonight. But we did, we did pay that. We paid three. Um.
And I think that any balance that is left in the three-stage process, that we should be putting that back to what we have on the way between two different ones. To all of those apartments. So, I still, we're gonna know what that is to look further down the road.
Couple of months ago, we discussed about the grant. Have, has that been still on the table? Or because we need to, that's more than reason I'm here, because I've been asked. The other thing is, we're getting close to January, and that means a lot of things have changed in that. The probability has gone up. I can't promise you can't guarantee you a better. But that, that's a very good likelihood. The next is considered on my act. I didn't have a chance to read it all on, if you have it, I think it's a couple of.
We would like to continue looking at the grants. Um, the problem is that, because we know how long of a process that can be, we don't wanna really count on it for the first stage of the process.
Looking at it in two thousand fourteen, you're.
Right, right. So that's why I said we really don't wanna back off, because then we're kinda still waiting until then to do anything. And this is a project that we've already had for two years. We'd like to do something with it. So, but obviously, continue to explore grants.
My question is, if we do go ahead with the seventy thousand for the park, as, as has already been said, that only leaves nine, ten thousand for everything else. They said that only leaves nine, ten thousand for everything else. How much does the library need?
You take out twelve for the, if you take twelve for the library, you're about six, five or six short. Yes, you're correct. It's pretty much.
Okay, so that leaves nothing to give back to the general, the water and sewer.
But we have already made our regular payments, and a little bit additional on one.
You gotta explain that to us, because you're.
It's still, it's, it's. It's changing. Tell me if my numbers are right. The one department, we typically paid fifteen thousand dollars a year reimbursing that, correct? And then this year we did twenty-two-five to take it to a balance of twenty-two-five, correct?
Correct. You're gonna pay against the three years, you're gonna pay it off in two years.
Right. And we've already paid that part. There's another one that is a total of.
Thirteen thousand, one oh seven oh seven.
That's the general, yeah.
That's the general.
But those still need to be paid, correct?
That's why, why did I think?
For repaying the fifteen thousand.
Theresa, would you like to come up here, please?
This should be a little bit more thinking.
I think if we're gonna ask questions, we should ask on Theresa. Theresa's the TIF administrator, so I think if our questions are to be addressed to her, as far as the funds available. Okay. And we have a motion, we have a second on this.
The explanation.
Save seventy thousand for the park and. I forget what's the other. We have the motion.
The general is just.
The remainder of the library. The remainder of the library.
General.
There's nothing else to pay.
Nothing.
General is just different bills on different projects that they pay, but they're projects that they're sworn to. And the city has paid, but it's paying that to the general, so we owe.
So that needs to be paid back. But if we do the seventy thousand for the park, we're not able to pay those back, is that correct?
Correct. And how much do we have to repay the general?
Listen. Let's keep this meeting in order, okay? If you have something to address, you address the chair and ask for the floor. This is not an argument back and forth, okay? If there's a question, we address it to Theresa.
I did just ask.
Address it, Theresa, please. You have a question about the money?
I answered it.
Alright. Is there any further discussion?
I'd have a question then for Teresa, if. If we do the seventy to the park, and we don't spend that, then can we take it off? And if we give the seventy to the park, when will we know how much it will take? Because we know there's not any grant money this year, so what will, when would we know what we would have left? Because if we do have some left that we could go back to the project, then we have to have that done by a certain time, Teresa?
You have to make sure you appoint it to certain areas, and you have to pay it. You have to have it on books by April thirty-first or thirty.
What we've done to, so we would.
Yes. Because two thousand.
Can we direct a question then, I mean, to the, to the committee, which is a tough one, because you may not know now, but when, when could we get a figure, if we commit the seventy, but when could we get a figure and see if we could do that? I, I saw something the other day, and I should have cut it out. Um, and it could have been a lot less equipment, but it was, it was for thirty or forty, and it was a park that had done, and I can't remember where that was. And they got a fairly big amendment for thirty or forty, but I don't know how big, so that's a tough one. I guess what I'm getting at.
Is that, does the play include, that include?
I think that was maybe just the, the, the play equipment.
What we're actually looking at is actually two of them, that, a lot of expenses in the shipping and the material that goes underneath and the border.
At this point, Rob, at this point, we have not had a committee meeting, or has not been a park committee meeting in the last ninety days, I'm aware. We have not present, been presented a budget. We do not have any sort of wish list. We're just dealing with a number of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Now, this is where we're at. We have a motion to spend seventy thousand dollars on the park for three years. We don't have a budget. We don't have a plan. We've had no committee meetings. We have no idea what the money is going to be spent for. We have some ideas gonna be spent for equipment, but we don't have any details. We have not been presented a plan. The council has no information on which to make this decision, other than whether or not we want to do it. Now, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we want to address the fact that we want to spend seventy thousand dollars this year, next year, and the year after on the city park? I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm getting an awful lot of heat from the community about the extravagance of the city council. A lot of people have reminded me that it was the firemen that put up the, uh, park platform, and it was the Women's Flower Club that maintained the gardens for years. It was the horseshoe team that maintained that. Basically, now we haven't done anything to the park for many years. So I guess we're trying to make up ground here. But a lot of the community is pretty upset about the fact that if we were so worried about our children, we'd have a safe place for them to walk on Prairie and Henderson Street, coming and going to school. And we'd have a place for them to walk to get to the library. People in the community seem to feel that this is an awful lot of money, without even having, having them present a plan. Now, does anyone want to address this issue as to the wisdom, or how are we exactly going to spend this money? We're just basically throwing the seventy thousand dollars up in the air, saying, "Here it is." We have no idea where that money is going. This year, next year, or the year after.
Well, we, we do, we do know what, what's being done in the three years.
Every TIF project that's been presented to the city has said we want to buy this, A, B, C, D. This is what it costs. These are our estimates. This is the cost of the end project. We have none of this at this point. We just have a number. Yes.
And why was this all approved?
It was approved last.
When?
Rob, you were in the council, were you not? Was it April? The motion was, the motion was made by Nasty, seconded by Larry, and seventy thousand on the park for three years. And the five councilor in here are the voting, yes.
It is a lot of money, but. I, I don't like the idea that you approved it, and then now it's like.
I'm okay with that.
You know, that's another thing, that it's an awful lot of money. And I'm like you, I've heard a lot of complaints, and like, "What are you doing with two-hundred-some thousand dollars in the park?" And I understand that, sounds like an awful lot of money. And I'm sure when you start putting figures together, it probably, it may end up to be that, but it may not. But I, I think they deserve something. I, I think, I think that there's something to get started on. And then, maybe, maybe next year, maybe as a community, we can do something, you know? If we have to come up with seventy thousand dollars next year, we'll have to probably come up with that. I just, I, I think, once it was approved, I just hate to see this council, or some of this council, approve it. And I, I just don't, I think it's an awful lot of money.
Well, the shelter down the road, I know that the Lions Club has approached, and I don't know if he's talked to you yet, Nasty, but that they'd be very much interested if the stuff is bought, they'll contact, and they'll do a lot of that, so I know that we probably wouldn't spend it all there, and then, you know.
And the same with Gordy Whitaker. Gordy Whitaker said he would, you know, he'd be interested in tearing the concrete out. I mean, we got people that will help us, that probably we can't get this off town.
We always had, we've had a proud tradition of volunteer help, just like the park. We've done this in parks and bow lions through the years. The Lions Club for years supported the little. We don't have quite that much now, but I have done some research too. Uh, but we need to have some real numbers. We need to know what we're talking about. Teresa?
You don't have to decide tonight. If, if you don't think you're there, don't make the decision tonight, I feel.
We don't have to reduce the time.
I could say by the end of the year you should know, but also, you have, this money, you don't want a whole lot left in your account by the end of April. If it's not gone, you have to designate it where it's going, or they can come back and take this money away.
Now?
So, okay, I have a question.
Here, let.
So what you're saying is, if, if we appropriate, okay, and say fifty thousand dollars, okay? And we've got the twenty-seven thousand left in there, okay? And we haven't paid back the general fund, and we haven't paid back the, uh, regular general fund. That can be say, okay, this is what we're gonna do with it, to get rid of it, you personally?
Or you can put, if you wanna do twelve thousand to the library to get that project done, you can say it's going to be spent.
No, I'm there.
But the general and the water and sewer, it can be used on that too. You just have to put it on the, um, paper that they have to send back to the government, the report. And I have that report with me tonight, if you would all like to look at it, to know where, where I'm coming from. I don't think this, explaining this to you, I, I don't think I've given it there to you.
No, I.
So I brought the report with me to show you what I've got done for this year's report. And on there, you have to put your end amounts. And then on the next page, if there is a lot there, you have to stay in there, what you're going to spend it on. We only had fifty-two dollars left this last night, so I don't think I have to do that. I did put a couple things that we might be spending on, like the water and sewer, which we've already paid back to twenty-two-five.
And that was by a recommendation from the TIF committee.
Yes.
Let's see if we have any more discussion from the council, and ask the audience, if they'd like to, just. Is there any more discussion to the motion which was made by Mayor Luthner to appropriate seventy thousand dollars?
No, it wasn't made.
No, I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
Nasty made a motion, do a second. Appropriate seventy thousand to the park, and what was the rest of that motion?
Okay, just done.
Balance of the library.
Yeah.
And the balance would be how much?
Nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-six.
So we would basically expend the fund on the park. I think there was fifteen hundred for the TIF administrators, is that correct?
Yeah.
And the remainder of the fund, sixty-seven and change, to the library. Now, is there any further discussion on that motion?
Yes, because her part of her motion did not include fifteen hundred dollars to eat.
Right.
I'm sorry, that was not a motion.
Yeah, no.
That was not.
We, we wrote it down, what was committed for the park, seventy thousand, and the remainder, after that, to the library. I didn't, I didn't make that big.
So there's nothing left for TIF administrator?
Nothing left, anything. My remainder is intending to mean after we pay what has already been put out there, whatever that is that's left, the library.
Motion for seventy thousand to the park, the remainder to the library, and no other.
That means it's paid, is what someone said, what I wrote down.
Yeah, that's the motion. Is that correct? Any further discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I believe it, it, it just slipped, it's incorrect that it should include the fifteen hundred for the TIF. Since this is becoming such a heated, and we've, we've still had motion, though, can we, even with the motion, can we let that die to carry over till next time?
We can have, maybe, we can withdraw the motion, or we can.
So we can, so we can have some figure, have some figures, and, and see if we can work with it. I, I don't know if I can.
You can, you can postpone the motion to.
Right.
Next time. Yes, you can.
But I'm just in discussing, so that maybe we can get some, some figures and, and have a little more harder evidence to work with.
Are you making that?
Oh, I am.
Making a motion to.
To, uh.
Postpone. Yes. The, the, postpone the motion to November, meaning pending.
A meeting by the.
Meeting of the Park Committee on Further Information. Do you second that, Bruce? Do we have a second of that motion? Okay. Any discussion there? Now, before we vote on any of those motions, Jason, you had a comment.
Well, I was just gonna make comment that the Parks Committee has done research on this, when they applied for grants several years ago. So they do have an idea and actual plans for park structure, which I have copies of to go in there. This initial seventy thousand seems a lot, but you're paying for that safety equipment, you're paying for that safety factor. Uh, that's not stuff you can build. You can't build plastic slides and stuff out of two-by-fours. So I, I think after the original seventy thousand, you could save a lot of money, like Connie and Bob had said, with volunteer help, with the shelter, and pouring concrete pads, and. Bob have said, with volunteer help, with the shelter, and pouring concrete pads, and getting stuff donated. But for the park equipment, which was in this first stage, I don't think you'd find any cheaper than $70,000, or be able to do it any cheaper. So initially, $70,000 shock factor, but after that, I don't think you'd have to spend the full $210,000.
Understood. But the initial motion was for $210,000. This council has not received information from the park committee as to how that money is going to be spent. Now, yes, you're correct, there was some work done in the past. There was a request made for a grant, and it was done somewhat hurriedly, and just we've gone through the catalogs and found some things that we'd like to have. So at this point, it was done in a matter of about three days.
There was actual design, and I worked on the design and the plans and stuff, but I mean, technically, the park committee can move ahead on this, it's already been approved, and submit the bills to TIF.
Well, the TIF, the TIF would need to have, the TIF committee needs to have the information from the park committee, so they know what they're voting on.
They've already voted on it, so...
Sorry, anything else on this? We'll call the vote on Rob's motion to table this and carry it forth till next month.
Aye.
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 Carry it forward to the next month. All right, anything else? If there is nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.